TV networks that he disagrees with. And that would fall, and correct me if I'm wrong, Charlie, under the independent agency known as the Federal Communications Commission. That's right. So what we're already talking about is a very meaningful re-envisioning and restructuring of presidential power.
That's correct, Michael, but there's one agency that looms larger in Trump's mind than any other in the government, and that's the Department of Justice. And it is an agency with which Donald Trump has a historically very fraught relationship.
Well, to all three of you, Maggie, Charlie, Jonathan, thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Tomorrow, we'll bring you part two of this special episode of The Daily. I hope you'll join us.
The Daily is supported by Sony Pictures Classics, presenting We Grown Now, a new film directed by Men All Bag about two young Chicago boys whose friendship is challenged when an unexpected event shakes their world. Now playing select cities starts everywhere Friday. And by the Financial Times.
At this time, I'm going to call on Vice Mayor to read the certification motion.
I move with respect to any close meeting just concluded that each member of City Council in attendance certified of the best of his or her knowledge that, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act; and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, please call it off.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. Thank you. And there be no further bidding. This set forth, this special meeting of City Council is adjourned. All right. Now, the City Council recess session for April 25, 2024, 7:00 PM is hereby called to order, and I'll ask our clerk to call it off.
Mr. Pretty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Here.
Ms. Whiteboyd.
Here.
Mr. Volleson.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here. Thank you. My quorum is president. I will be delivering the invocation tonight, and I'll also be following that with the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's everybody stand. Et oh God, our Father, we come to you at this time thanking you for this day that you've given us. And, Lord, we ask you, as we come before you to conduct business of the city and this valley, to guide and direct us, the elected and appointed officials. And, Father, we thank you for how you've blessed us and continue to strengthen this city. And, Lord, we ask you now to continue to do those things, Lord, that are pleasing and help us to do those things that are pleasing in your sight. It is in your high and holy name, in the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank everybody for coming out this evening. Let me just give you the purpose for our meeting here tonight. Tonight's public hearing will be televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/ronocva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to conduct three separate public hearings. One, recommended budget for the city for fiscal year 2024, 2025 at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached. Number two is a proposed 2024 annual plan update to the 2024 five-year HUD consolidated plan. And number three, proposed real estate tax rate increase at 7:10 or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached. There will be no comments or action taken by council on any of these matters this evening. Let me read that again. There will be no comments or action taken by council on any of the matters that have come forth this evening. All right. Item number two, we're going to go right into the public hearings. Recommended fiscal year 2024, 2025 city of Roanoke budget, and I am opening the public hearing. And I'll call on our clerk to introduce speakers who've signed up for this item.
We have about 11 speakers on this item. The first speaker is Sylvia King, followed by Kate Woolley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and Vice Mayor Cobb and the rest of the City Council. It's a pleasure and an honor to be before you all and also the City Manager. I just want to say thank you for this opportunity, and this is the budget for the fiscal year for 2025, correct? So I'm here in representing friends of Washington Park concerning the caretaker's house, the Evans caretaker's house. And the point of the matter is that we, I plead that when y'all take the budget in consideration that y'all will age some finance towards the Evans' house, caretaker's house, because little make much. So whatever you feel that you all could contribute in finance for that cause, because reason why? Because that little house that sits on the hill on Orange Avenue, and you come down to here on Gainesboro, and you go across Henry Street, and you see this statue that says Martin Luther King, and then you go down Jefferson Street, Campbell Street, and then we go to the Alms Park. We all come together as one unified force that's in Roanoke, Virginia. And that is that we all have a goal to love nature and be out there. Every nationality and goal loves to be outside. So we want to be able to have funding. We've been doing fundraisers to help go towards the finance towards Evans' caretaker's house. And we are honored to be a part of history-making because it's historical. If it wasn't for the Evans' house, it would, before Roanoke City came into existence. Think about that. And that's a vision. That house was there before Roanoke City became a city. So it's a lot of history. It's dealing with that particular house, you know? And like I said, all right, and it's a foundation. And one thing that we all know about foundation, you do not mess with foundation, because when the foundation crumble, we all crumble. And the structure of the engineer, he went in and he said that that house is good, no matter what it looked like. It's good. It's not going to fall down like it looked like it. It has potential. So let it be potential. I'm putting it in you all's hands on behalf of the friends of Washington Park. We want you all to do something. Something is better than nothing. If you care about our city, it's not one person's city, but it's all our cities that we unite as one. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, who's this coming this week to?
I'm Kate Woolley.
I'm actually here on behalf of Laura Hartman. She was sick today, and I have her materials that I just passed around.
Okay, thank you. If you read it, go ahead.
I am here tonight representing the Bus Riders of Roanoke Advocacy Group in what we hope to be our asks for the upcoming city budget. You can find most of our details on the sheets of paper that we're passing around. I'm here to sum up and show you some of the work that we've been doing this past year. One of our biggest asks is that you continue to fund existing services for Valley Metro. We love our bus operators and mechanics and hope that you will continue to support them as you have been. We also are extremely grateful for Metro Flex, which is a program that you recently started this year, and that has been used by a lot of the people that come to our organization. We would also love for buses to run more frequently and to more places that they don't already go, including increases in capacity, convenience, and ridership. Another point is that we would also like to ask for improvements to already existing infrastructure. One of Bragg's recent achievements has been the Sorry's Bus Stop Contest, in which we did a March Madness-style bracket, as you can see on these two signs next to me, of citizen-nominated bus stops that they felt could use improvement. Our winner was Orange Westbound at King, and as a reward, we took some photos with this here bow made by one of our members and spent some time picking up litter and pushing away tree branches and bracken. One of the biggest complaints that we heard about bus stops was that there were no sidewalks and no curb cuts for people who were mobility impaired. You can see that that is a running theme on all of the bus stops nominated for us. If we had to dream, if we were to ask you for everything that the Bus Riders of Roanoke Advocacy Group wants for the future of public transit, it would be that you expand the infrastructure, frequency, and reach of our already extremely useful public transit system. Why do we want you to do this? Because we want the best for the citizens of Roanoke. We want them to be able to travel with dignity, to work conveniently, and to live their lives in Roanoke without need of a car. I will sum up with these final words written by Dr. Hartman, the woman who could not be here today. A great city deserves great transit. Are we a great city? Let's show up our pure cities by having the best transit system in the region. This is how we attract young people. This is how we attract businesses. Bragg's vision for Roanoke includes excellent transit that attracts all good things to our city, lifts our people out of poverty, and brings health to our citizens. Thank you very much.
The next speakers, Jessica Blandy and Nikki Vodren.
My name is Jessica Blandy. I am the President of the Roanoke City Council of PTAs and PTSAs. I represent over 2,000 families in Roanoke City Schools that have joined the PTA advocacy groups. I wanted to start by thanking you, the City Council members, for creating this space for this listening session. In the tenure that I have seen this board work together, I've noticed that you not only hear the concerns, but you listen to them and you act them, act on them. I wanted to say I thank you. I also wanted to mention that I know that there are so many connections on this board. I see colleagues, I see former classmates, I see parents in a school system that I adore. So I know that this is, I know that this is a close, this is close to all of us. I'd like to highlight the public schools' constant glow-up, if you will. We've enjoyed a lot of success over the past 20 years or so. In the past four years alone, and I have a list of 14 accomplishments, and I'm just going to try to go through some of the most important things we've done in the past couple years. The schools have created the Equity and Action Plan to ensure equitable CTE opportunities for all students, centralized administration, and increased accessibility to essential services. This is done by the Charles W. Day Tech Center, which opened in January. The former Roanoke Times building was purchased, which will give us the ability to have all of our central office under one roof, and then turn the old central office into the Community Empowerment and Education Center. We launched Staying Safe by Staying Connected programs. We have, under that umbrella, there are weekly summer athletic camps, fine arts, summer academy, culinary arts boot camp, our CPS works, which is a job fair and a special education transition resources fair. We created a community builders initiative, increased focus on teacher recruitment, added new teacher and staff positions, including counselors, social workers. So I'm going to stop with the achievements, but I have more. Every dollar we spend aligns with our strategic plan. We can report exactly how much money is spent on each priority at the end of the year. An independent auditor at our December 2023 school board meeting praised the city schools for their incredibly well-done stewardship of money. There's a value about being clear about our priorities, and Roanoke City Schools can report how much money we are spending on each priority at the end of the year. This success we've had is the result of nearly 20 years with the current budget formula. If you change the successful policy as recommended, there is no guarantee we can say that 20 years from now. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, and members of City Council, and our City Manager Bob Cowell. I'm Nikki Vodren, the Executive Director of Mill Mountain Zoo. Thank you all for your funding support in the past and in the current year, and thank you for the opportunity and consideration of funding in 2025. The zoo has undergone a physical, cultural, and aesthetic transformation over the past three and a half years. We understand the gravity of responsibility we hold to protect and care for over 250 endangered, vulnerable, injured, and non-releasable animals year-round, as well as the protected land that is part of the Mill Mountain Land Trust. We take great pride in keeping this special place safe, accessible, and fun while practicing and conveying our impactful mission to over 55,000 people all over the nation. Roanoke City is, Roanoke City's zoo is a vibrant destination in a natural setting that drives economic growth and enhances the community's quality of life. The zoo is a tremendous asset to the city and a true partner. We are a tourism engine that pays taxes to the city, so as the zoo continues to grow and prosper, so does our city. Mill Mountain Zoo is a nonprofit organization with a business mindset. Your zoo is a wildlife conservancy that earned and retains accreditation from the Zoological Association of America and is governed by the USDA. All of this means that we uphold the highest national standards of animal welfare, ethics, and safety in the nation. We are one of only two zoological institutions on the Blue Ridge Parkway, which puts Roanoke at a serious advantage for sustainable tourism. We are the closest teaching zoo to Virginia Tech Vet School. We facilitate kind, humane research on site, and we are an elite percentage of institutions in the world chosen to house a pack of critically endangered red wolves. All of this has secured Roanoke's zoo on a national platform. As you each make difficult budgetary decisions, I remind you that your zoo is Roanoke's only zoo, and while it is small, it is mighty and worthy of your investment. You all are, you council members are the leadership who are reviving the community zoo, and with your continued support, we are poised to reach our full potential. While you all consider how to disperse funding, I humbly ask you to please give strong consideration to our request. At the rate at which we are making progress, imagine what your zoo could accomplish in real time. Thank you.
The next two speakers, Kim Smith and Steve Baker.
Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to address City Council on behalf of the Mill Mountain Zoo. My name is Kim Smith. I am the President of the Mill Mountain Zoo Board. I was born and raised in Roanoke City. I joined the zoo board three years ago, and I became President last year. With my strong affection for animals, it was an easy decision to join this board. I have been so fortunate to be part of an organization that has such a passionate executive director such as Nikki Vodren, bringing her vision and innovations to our zoo. If you have not visited the zoo lately, I please encourage you to do so. The Zoo Choo is back, a beautiful mural in the train tunnel, new exhibits with wallabies, some of them being the newest exhibits, especially with an albino one of that. While preparing for this meeting, I thought back to when Jack Hannah was brought in for a fundraiser about the zoo 10 years ago, and I can still remember his comments regarding Mill Mountain Zoo. Jack said that our zoo is one of the most unique zoos in the country due to its close proximity to the city on top of a mountain, and how fortunate we are to have our zoo in a natural habitat rather than in an urban area that is surrounded by concrete like so many zoos. He praised the way our habitats are built in and around their natural surroundings, and our community zoo is only one of two zoos in the United States that sits on top of a mountain with 360-degree view areas of the valley. You can actually see this view every day from the zoo cam on WFX RTV during our weather segments. They are truly breathtaking. Our zoo, along with the Mill Mountain Star, are such a treasure for our neighbors and tourists alike, and we plan to continue to make the zoo bigger and better. With the city's help with additional funding, we can make our mission of conservation and education a true dream come true. We appreciate all the support from the city and thank you again for your consideration.
Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, City Manager Cowell, members of council. It's always a tough ask to be the third of the zoo people to speak, but I'm happy to be here, I'm really proud to be here. My name is Steve Baker. I'm a business owner, trial attorney. I'm a resident of the northwest part of Roanoke City, and I'm the immediate past president of the Zoological Society, the Mill Mountain Zoo. And I asked Nikki to let me speak to you all today so I could tell you about my experience with the zoo, because I think it was formative for me, but more because I think the zoo has a special role in the city, which I think you all are aware of. I had the opportunity to serve on the board for eight years, and one of those years was during the COVID year. And so when my family went to Florida for a five-week holiday over the wintertime period, I stayed here and ran Mill Mountain Zoo as a volunteer. As an executive director, he resigned on November 30th. I began my work on December 1st. I worked every day for five weeks at the zoo. The weather was harsh, the animals were lethargic. It was winter. People don't like to come to the zoo. I thought so, while we had a lot of time to sort of get our stuff together. And what's weird is, as I was at the zoo day in and day out, people started trickling in. And I would think to myself, why are they here? The animals aren't active, the weather's not nice. And so I set my mind to try to figure out, how do we get them to come all the time? How do we get more people to come? That's the goal. That's what Nikki and her team have been working on, that's what we're all trying to accomplish. And I don't know the answer to that, but what I learned in all that thinking I did about why these people are there, I remember one particularly powerful anecdote. It was two teenagers, 13 and maybe 14, or 14 and 15, probably not driving, somebody dropped them off, and they were walking arm-in-arm through the zoo. It's like 10:30, 11, something like that in the day. And I thought to myself, I wonder how many years people have been walking arm-in-arm on this mountain? I think it's probably been about 72 years. The zoo opened in 1952. It turns out, that anecdote leads me to this argument I want to make, or this thought I want to share with you about the zoo, which is, I think the zoo can be whatever you and this community decide that it is. But what I don't want this council or anyone to miss is the opportunity and the role that the zoo can play as a safe space for our young people. And I think that's lost, because zoos are kind of out of favor. But if you bring in the educational component, if you make these various commitments that make sense with everything else going on in the city, the zoo can be a place. People still come, even when the weather's bad, even when the animals don't come out, because people feel safe there. And I told Nikki, as we came up today, I said, we all are part of a common tradition because of the zoo, and because of other things in Roanoke City, no doubt. So the ask the zoo has made, it's important, because during that winter, I didn't know if we would be open on January of 2021. And I also thought that in December of 19, about January of 20, and December of 18, about January of 19, and so on and so forth. So thank you all for listening to the concerns of the residents and of the zoo family, and thank you very much.
The next two speakers, Shandra Jones and Jessica Turley.
My name is Shandra Jones, and I've been with the construction firm Robinson-Worden for 13 years. I moved to Roanoke three years ago to build the Carillion Roanoke Memorial Hospital's Crystal Spring Tower. As a part of that team, we did some volunteer work over at Mill Mountain Zoo on their Black Bear and Red Wolf Exhibits, and through those capital projects, we learned about the zoo's mission. I also had the opportunity to get to know the staff, and as I immersed myself in this community, I realized the deep significance of the zoo to the city of Roanoke and the surrounding area. So I proudly joined the zoo's Board of Directors and now serve on the Facilities and Safety Committee. Witnessing the zoo's progress, the staff's commitment, and the community's appreciation for the zoo further justifies the worthiness of funding from the city of Roanoke. The zoo is a wise, mutually beneficial investment. We have a plan, a strong team, committed leadership, a proven positive upward trajectory, and a solid track record of delivering high-quality capital projects dedicated to safety and accessibility and advancements in operations and infrastructure. Even though we've achieved a lot in these three and a half short years, we still need your help to close the operational gap through the winter months that Steve was just telling you about, when 75% of the revenue is lost. Strong support is needed to retain the talented team that takes care of the zoo through the winter and to care for the vulnerable animals and the guardianship, and to deliver the educational mission of wildlife conservation. Mill Mountain Zoo has never been in a better position for the city to reward the zoo's progress and increase its value to the region by making a deeper investment. With increased funding, this community will see more exciting, tangible... With increased funding, this community will see more exciting, tangible improvements in real time, which will encourage even more tourism, to stimulate the local economy, bolster community pride, and drive our powerful mission to the masses. I'm excited to advocate on behalf of Mill Mountain Zoo as both a board member and a transplant resident who can see the zoo's clear value. It is my hope that the city will recognize and reward the hard work, completed and planned, with additional funding and resources to maintain this momentum. If you haven't been to the zoo in a while, as Kim indicated when she spoke, we encourage you to visit so that you can see firsthand the zoo's important impact on the Southwest Valley region and beyond. Thank you for your time and consideration.
My name is Jessica Turley. I have three children who are served by Renoke City Schools. Two of them have disabilities and receive special education services. I am here to ask you to reconsider the proposed budget formula for Renoke City Schools. This proposed budget will turn the current stable foundation of funding to a more unstable source. Teacher contracts and long-term educational planning will be affected, as funding will be conditional instead of predetermined and secure. Teacher contracts, programming, and capital projects will be unpredictable. School leadership, who should be focused on student education and achievement, will instead have to prioritize funding and resource allocation. Ultimately, this will have a negative impact on the most vulnerable people in our community, our children. I appreciate that there are many, many areas of the city that are very important and need to be funded. My ask is that you reconsider the proposed budget formula and keep it the way it has been, and allow our kids to have the highest quality education possible. Across the board, it has been proven that education solves a host of societal challenges. Education is not a drain on Renoke, it's the answer for Renoke. Our kids only get one childhood, they get one shot at their education. These kids don't get a vote in this. They don't get a say on how their education is valued in Renoke City, but they are the ones who will pay the price for the actions that we, the adults, take on their behalf. They rely on us to make decisions that will affect them for the rest of their lives. They don't have time for us to experiment on this. Let's stop asking the only population who have no voice in this situation to sacrifice on our behalf. Let's find a way to build up their futures through adequately funding their education and giving them a financially stable learning environment that they deserve. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Emily Casey, and I'm here tonight to speak to the proposed budget resolution regarding Renoke City Public Schools. In 2012, the school board in the city of Renoke created a budget formula wherein the school system could receive a flat 40% of city revenue. This innovative agreement has been extremely successful, not only in the collaborative relationship between schools and city government, but in the accomplishments of the school system. Using this formula has all but eliminated political bargaining between the school system and the city, which is a primary reason as to why our relationship has been so strong. When the budget formula was set, the school system agreed to essentially reimburse the city for two line items, stormwater fees and debt services on city-owned property that the schools are using. In the 14 years since this formula was created, those line items have increased to six line items that the school system pays back to the city of Renoke. The anticipated portion of the RCPS 2023-2024 budget to be paid back to the city for these services includes the following. Police and Sheriff's Department School Resource Officers, $1,225,060. Municipal Audit Services, $76,000. Local Costs of Children's Services Act Funded Services for Students Placed for Services by the School Division, $3,145,944. Debt Service on School Projects, $11,317,470. Stormwater Fees, $641,453. And Radio Support, $90,000. This adds up to over $16 million. In effect, even though the budget formula is set to 40% of all city revenue being given to the school system, this $16 million direct payback to the city puts us under that 40% at actually about 34%, and that's just for this year. With the proposed resolution, the schools would only receive 40% of the proposed budget. This drops the actual percentage that RCPS will receive from 40% to about 27% once the budget is reconciled. It is not accurate to tell taxpayers that 40% of their taxes are going to schools. It has not been accurate, and if the resolution is passed, it will be significantly inaccurate. I would propose that if the school system is not receiving 40% of the actual revenue, that the city reabsorbs the six line items that the schools have been paying back to the city. It is highly unusual that a school system pays, excuse me, school system pays for School Resource Officers, CASA-funded services, and the entirety of debt services on school projects. Thank you.
I don't think she could come tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. My name is Keely Meadows, and I'm a teenager in Renoke. I first want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak here and to share my opinion. I really appreciate the space that you provided. I want to introduce myself a little bit to provide some context into the problem that I'm bringing up. I'm homeschooled, and I started homeschooling about two years ago. I use a method of homeschooling that encourages me to work in the community, make connections, and develop relationships with other people. I would ride the bus to go do these things. It's cheaper, more reliable than an Uber, and easier, except for one factor, the bus stops. I choose not to ride the bus because of how dangerous our bus stops are. If I want to use the bus, I would get on the bus at the intersection of Plantation Road and Herschberger Road, or at the bus stop at the Walmart Neighborhood Market on Plantation Road about half a mile south of the Herschberger and Plantation Bus Stop. Both of these bus stops are extremely dangerous, but especially the bus stop in front of the Walmart Neighborhood Market. I often see veterans, the elderly, disabled, and just normal people struggling to get access to that bus stop, I provided you pictures with the bus stop, safely, let alone wait for the bus safely. It's scary seeing anyone wait there, so why would I wait there? I want to say that this is just one bus stop out of dozens that aren't safe in Renoke City. People won't use public transportation if it isn't accessible. Valley Metro has done everything in their power to make their buses as accessible as possible, but we need your help. If you invest more into the safety of our bus stops, you'll see a return in bus riders' and rider frequency. This would benefit everyone in the community and make Renoke happier. Please invest more into our bus stops and make them safe and make them accessible. And I provided you pictures of the bus stop, if you have extras, I think I provided you with extras, but I would appreciate if you would take a look at it. There's less than half a foot of space to wait for the bus before there's a turn lane, so it's really scary. And the only way we can change that is if you guys invest more into our bus stops. So again, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, and it means so much. Thank you.
That was the last speaker on this matter.
Thank you. And we will close the public hearing on this matter and move to our second public hearing, which is the Proposed 2024 Annual Plan Update to the 2024 Five-Year HUD Consolidated Plan. And I will now open the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, are any speakers signed up for this item?
Yes, we do. We have two speakers. Will be Betty Jean Wolfe and with her guest.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, City Council. Again, my name is Betty Jean Wolfe. I'm the Senior Director for Community Engagement at Habitat for Humanity. It's an honor to be here tonight, and I want to introduce Nadeja Hunt, who is one of the current homebuyers in Habitat for Humanity's Home Buyer Program. I don't want to take up much of her time. She's going to read and share her experience as a Renoke resident, somebody who grew up here and currently is a homebuyer, and this is her daughter, Nala. So without further ado.
Hi. My name is Nadeja Hunt. I am 29 years old and a lifelong Renoke resident. I am also the single mother of a seven-year-old daughter named Nala Johns. Though I gave birth to Nala, Nala made me. I'll explain more about that shortly. I grew up in the northwest Renoke, in the Marrows and Orange neighborhood. I'm aware that some people look down on northwest. They think the neighborhoods and houses are not so good, but I see Marrows and Orange differently. Growing up there prepared me for life in the real world. I was raised by a single mom and grew up with four brothers, Michael, Brandon, Hakeem, and Ashmeet. My brothers mean the world to me. For a time, our family lived in a triplex, but every time you turned around, something new was broken. But as a child, I didn't see it that way. How life felt to me was that I was with my mom and my brothers, and together we'll find a way to make do or make it through. Picture having to choose between having lights or water. I know, tough, right? My mom busted her tail and did what she could for us when she could. I respected her for that. Hard choices had to be made. When things got rocky, we had to move. We'd stay with relatives, we'd stay with friends. In the beginning, moving in seemed cool, but then I woke and we were out, and we'll have to move again. As my brothers and I got older, sometimes our family would have to split up. As younger ones, continued to househop until mom got back right in a comfortable position. Once we ressembled and settled in again, something new would happen, and my family would be on the move again. Like this started to become normal. As I got older, I couldn't wait to be of age where I could take care of everyone else. By my 18th birthday, I had keys to my own apartment, though a bedroom suite was the only furniture I had, I moved in anyway. What's all that mattered was I had my own. At times, I allowed my family to stay in my one-bedroom apartment, even when opening my door to their request made my life uncomfortable. I never let things show because I know what it's like to have somebody make you feel uncomfortable when their place is the only place you can stay. I've always been an empath. Sometimes I worry about others more than I worry about myself. Sometimes that's scary. As an adult, I always wanted to be loved. I sought comfort, but in most cases, that doesn't mean a relationship. I just wanted to feel whole. God knew and he understood. I had my daughter, Nala, when I was 21 years old. I like to say I had her, but Nala made me, because since I gave birth to my princess, it's been all about her. I work 100-plus hours to ensure my child is comfortable and doesn't have to go through what I did as a child. As I did as a child. My once-empty apartment is now a fully furnished duplex, but the duplex is not our dream home. Every few months, something goes wrong, and maintenance must be called. Where we live is comfortable because it's affordable. We have lights, water, heat, and air conditioning, yet because I don't own our duplex, my daughter and I are limited in certain ways. I was told to take down the trampoline I bought her. We can't have animals, I can't put up a poo for Nala, or paint walls. Having to explain these limitations to a young child is hard when you hardly ever tell her no. Nala used to ask me all the time, "Mama, when are we getting a new house?" I'll say soon, but I knew I was comfortable paying my affordable rent. In my mind, in 2023, it seemed impossible to rent out different or better properties. I told myself, "We're not moving until I can afford to buy a house." In my head, I laugh and joke about it, but now I could look at my baby with a serious face and tell her, "We're getting a new house, but we're not renting it, we're buying it." If I can't make any other promises to her, I know for a fact I could promise my daughter that as long as she's with me, she would never have to experience living with anybody she doesn't want to. Nobody would ever get a chance to make her uncomfortable in their home because my baby girl will forever have a home. It's crazy because my daughter, Nala, and I have small talks about our life and how it's about to change once I become a homeowner. She doesn't understand, she's too young, but when she cut that ribbon on the day of the Habitat Home Dedication, it'll all make sense. I've got a daughter to feed with no help. The last person I'm thinking about is myself. This is all for my daughter, Nala. I can't wait to spend plenty of years living comfortably with my child. I've learned that if you're not right within your home, you can't be right outside your home. This Habitat Home Buyer partnership is just the beginning of my story.
I'll close with, Nadeja is a wonderful partner with Habitat. We're very grateful that she's here. She expresses the interest of many of our Habitat partners, and I, on behalf of Karen Mason, our Executive Director, and our entire staff, really want to thank the city of Renoke for your significant investment in affordable housing in the city. It makes a difference in individuals' lives and families' lives and in our city's lives. So thank you very much.
Mayor, that was the last speaker on the HUD matter.
Okay. In view of that, we're going to close the public hearing and go to our next item, which is item number three, which is the Proposed Real Estate Tax Rate Increase. And I'm going to open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you tell us how many speakers have signed up for this?
I have two speakers, Ronald Bailey and Libby Schiffer.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Ronald Bailey. I've been living in Renoke for 77 years, my entire life. Anyway, I'm here, when I was out in the hallway out there and I saw it was a proposed rate increase, I about fell out. And because I'm really here to talk about making it a fair rate, not an increase. My taxes for next year on the real estate is rising 24.3%. And whether I can afford it or not, there's plenty of people out here that, you know, it's going to be a burden for them, whatever their percentage of rate increase, be it business or their house or whatever. So when you take that money out of somebody's wallet for the city at a 24.3%, maybe it's a little too much. Some people can't afford, you know, they have to decide whether they're going to pay for electric bill, or medicine, or food, or clothes for their children. So I'm here to say, maybe you should think about lowering the rate a little bit, from a $1.22 down a little bit, to make it fair for everybody. If you're getting an increase anyway, which I talked to him a couple weeks ago, and my understanding is there's about a $30 million increase because of the real estate taxes going up in valuation. So, and I think he said, for every penny you go down, you lose a million dollars. Well, if you're gaining 30 million, maybe you could use 15 million or 20 million instead of 30 million. And if that means you have to tighten your belt a little bit, that's what's going to happen to many people when they have to put out more money for the real estate taxes. They're going to have to decide what to do. So I just hope that you will take that in consideration and maybe lower it to a fair amount, so it's a little bit fairer for everybody. Thank you.
I'm speaking tonight against the proposed real estate tax increase. According to the Proposed Fiscal Year 2024-25 Budget posted online, real estate values in Renoke are up 9.3% from the previous year. It would follow, then, that even maintaining the current tax rate, revenues will also be up as they will be collected on a higher dollar amount. Also, according to the proposed budget, the real estate tax revenue is projected to increase 6.88% in 2025 compared to 2024. There are other projected increases in revenue listed as well. Revenue from personal property tax is projected to increase 2.22%. Sales tax, 2.97% increase. Prepared food and beverage tax, 17.11% increase. Revenue from transient occupancy tax, set to increase 10.43%. Other local taxes, 0.16% increase. Grants and aid, intergovernmental revenue, 8.53% increase. Charges for services, 16.02% increase. Permits, fees, and licenses, revenue from those projected to increase 29.16%. That's a lot of taxes and fees. There is one, though, in fairness, that is projected to decrease, that would be the other non-local taxes, set to decrease 1.07%. Recently, the City Council adopted- be the other non-local taxes, set to decrease 1.07%. Recently, the city council adopted zoning reform laws for the stated purpose that these reforms would provide more affordable housing. Now the council is proposing an increase in real estate taxes that will make housing costs higher. These two things seem to be working against each other. If the council finds there is a budget shortfall, I would suggest it look at cutting excess costs and items that are not the responsibility of government. At a time when costs for basic items have been escalated for everyone over the past three years due to record inflation, I would strongly urge the council to not increase the real estate tax rate. Thank you.
That was the last speaker.
Thank you. All right. With that, we're going to close the public hearing on this item. And Vice Mayor, you just...
I was just going to ask our city attorney, the language that was in the agenda is a little confusing because the rate that we currently have, we're not, there's no proposal to increase the rate. The valuations have increased over the last couple of years. I wondered if our city attorney could explain why the language is in the agenda the way it is.
Be glad to. We are not increasing the rate. However, if the assessed value would increase by more than 1%, 1% or more, the total real estate tax levy, then we must advertise it as an increase. That's in accordance with Virginia law. General Assembly requires this. So I'm sorry to say that the agenda item, if you read it, is rather misleading. So the rate will not increase. However, the revenues generated as a result of increased value of the real estate will increase by more than 1%. I hope that's of help.
Thank you.
Now, please note that City Council will adopt the recommended FY 2024/2025 budget along with other related measures and consider actions with respect to the proposed 2024 Annual Plan Update to the 2020/2024 Five-Year HUD Consolidated Plan and proposed real estate tax increase during our city council meeting on Monday, May 13 at 2:00 PM. All right? With that said, be no further business. To come before the council, this recess session is adjourned.